For our planning board, Monday, January 6th, 2020, 6:00 PM here at Town Hall. Item one is approval of the minutes from the December 2nd meeting. Oh, oh, you can take roll call, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Joe Garcia.
Here.
Jessica Rubermin here. Josh Barrett.
Here.
Anthony Chock.
Here.
Caleb Zappolonia.
Here.
Joe DiMartino.
Here.
Joe Gardeosset.
Here.
All right, now it's the approval of the minutes from December 2nd. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move that motion.
Second, okay. Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item two, public meeting, recommendation to the town council requesting a zone change. 511 East Greenwich Avenue. Applicant is Padula Builders, Inc., and the location, assessors plat 30, assessors lot 17. Who's the applicant here?
Mr. Chairman, I have marked as exhibits, exhibit number one, the application for the zone change recommendation. Exhibit number two, the petition to the town council. Exhibit number three, the butters list. Exhibit number four, the radius map. And exhibit number five, the site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Thomas Cronin. Nolan Bernero, Cronin for our 1070 Main Street, Coventry Road Island for the applicant, Padula Builders, Inc. So, this is a request for a recommendation to town council for the zone change of this property. I went to the town council, December, introduced the project, asked them to refer it to this board for your review and recommendation. Should you give the recommendation, go back to the town council after advertisement and notice, and we'll have a vote at that level. So this is just for recommendation. Plat 30, lot 17, 511 East Greenwich Avenue. It's 8.93 acres, immediately adjacent to East Greenwich Avenue. Currently has a single-family home in the northwest corner. East of the property on East Greenwich Avenue are two single-family homes, kind of stacked up. And then, on the west side, a couple of single-family homes along East Greenwich Avenue as well. North across East Greenwich Avenue is a residential apartment development. And south is vacant land adjacent to the Cox Communications Building there. The reason why we're here for the zone change is that this is a lot that has a zoning line. It's one lot, just under nine acres. It has a zoning line running through the lot. So ju- just under a third of the lot is zone commercial, and about two-thirds of the lot is zone residential. The people who own it right now are interested in selling. My clients are interested in buying it, but they want to use it for residential purposes. And this mixed zoning causes problems with the title insurance company, the mortgage companies. It kind of, it puts, casts a little shade on the, on the title, as to, you know, if you want to put a house on a commercial property, the marketability of that title is somewhat in question. So we want to try to clean that up before we proceed with purchasing a property and any development of the property. It's about 300 feet of the eastern side of the property, that zone, commercial. The, the residential qualities of the property are what, you know, is in question. Most of the surrounding property is residential and neighbor nature. There's public acts, all the things that usually hear me say about my subdivision, you know, public access to the highway, being East Greenwich Avenue, public water, public sewer are available. Most of the surrounding property is single-family residential, with the, with the exception of the residential apartment complex across the road. The, so as long as it, it fits with the surrounding uses, it's not going to be inimical to the health, welfare, welfare and safety of the community. I'd ask this board to approve the, a recommendation to the town council that the whole lot be zoned residential R10. One of the recommendations by the planner, which he, he has professionally shared with me prior to me coming here tonight, was that the subject property shall not be utilized for a multifamily residential condominium development. That's recommendation number three in your package. I can't agree to that recommendation because we haven't finalized a plan for this property. I have communicated with the planner and suggested that we, I'd be willing to accept a stipulation that says I have to come back before this board to get approval for any, you know, multifamily, or even to subdivide the property into more than one lot. If I'm going to create a lot, I have to come back. So I would ask the board to consider that stipulation.
I want to make sure I'm clarifying this process. You went to the council.
Yes.
Get their okay to come to us to, to make a recommendation back to them.
That's correct.
And then after we make a recommendation, then when they, if they accept your proposal of what you want to do, then you're going to have to come back here for, for master plan, permanent approval, whatever it might be, for the development of your plan.
Only if they're going to do multifamily.
No?
No, even if I'm going to subdivide and make more than one lot, I'd be creating a new lot.
Yeah, so, so.
Mr. Cronin regularly tells me that if I'm going to create a new lot, I got to come back.
So, okay. So our conversation today should be about whether it makes sense for this whole lot to be residential, or to leave it where part of it is not.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, as I stated in my report, with some experience in zoning.
Yep.
There are lots in this town that were created with a crayon.
Mm-hmm.
And this is probably just somebody missed the line.
Yeah, 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 all right. Yeah, and the majority of the lot, substantial majority of the lot, is already residential.
That's correct.
It's not like you want to make the whole thing commercial. It's just different. That would be very different. So, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other presenters, or are you it?
I am it.
All right, okay. All right. Thank you, Attorney Cronin. All right, discussion on this? I don't have any problem with it. It makes sense. They're going to have to, they're going to have to come back to us anyway when they decide what they're going to do with it. And it just means the whole lot now becomes residential instead of most of the lot.
I have a question.
I have a question for, for Mark. What was the reasoning behind, if we do go residential, not building multifamily? Just maybe there's something I'm missing in the audience, or I know that's not important.
Well, there'll be several reasons, but, you know, the, the principal reason is there's a single-family home existing on the property, and it's abutting, single-family homes to the, to the east and to the west, so that, you know, it, one could argue that it would be incongruous to have a multifamily between all those single families. The other issue is there are substantial wetlands on the property. It may be difficult to get a multifamily development, but I have no objection to the attorney's proposed amendment that would read after the period without further planning board approval. I have no objection to that. But the planning board will still have control over any development.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
This won't impact any other properties? Any other adjacent properties?
No, it's only this property in particular that the, the zone change would affect. Properties to the south are zoned commercial industrial, I believe, that being, there's a huge buffer, and then it goes into the office park. Properties to the, to the west are zoned residential. Currently, across the street, they're zoned residential. And I think to the east, there, it's zoned commercial, but there are residential properties existing there, which is unusual. So no, it shouldn't.
Okay, so any, any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a mo- a motion that we recommend this favorably to the council.
I'll move the motion.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion passed. Thank you. All right, so item three is public meeting for removal of a stipulation of approval in the June Carr plat. Applicant is Shoreline Properties. Location is 146 Coeset Avenue and Carlson Circle.
Mr. Chairman, I have marked as exhibit number one, the application for the master plan amendment. Exhibit number two, a copy of the master plan. Exhibit three, the neighborhood petition. And exhibit number four, the green cards just handed to me.
Thank you. Is there someone?
So because I was not at the September 9th meeting, I wasn't taking part in this, so is it okay if I sit here?
Can you sit here?
You do not have to recuse yourself. You can, you can take part in the discussion. You just can't vote on it.
Okay, okay. Who's the applicant here? Is the applicant here?
Are we talking about Coeset Road or Coeset Avenue?
Coeset Avenue.
All right, it says Coeset Road.
The, the location says Coeset Avenue, 146 Coeset Avenue.
But in the lot, it says access from Coeset Road.
Right.
To, to respond to the individual's question, I believe the stipulation, as it's written on the decision letter, might say Coeset Road. That's a typo. Apologize for that.
Okay. All right, so as you get started, I'm, I'm confused as to why you made this application.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I'm starting, I'm starting in a hole, all right.
Yes.
So, Thomas Cronin. Nolan Bernero, Cronin for our 1070 Main Street, Coventry Road Island for the applicant, Shoreline. So AP 13, lot 599, is 2.81 acres. We've proposed a subdivision off Carlson Circle. The property's zoned R8. There are seven new lots proposed. Each will have at least 8,000 square feet. Seven new lots are conforming with the subdivision regs and the zoning ordinance. We've requested no waivers, variances, or exceptions. You may recall that we appeared before the board September 9th, 2019. My partner, John Bernero, made the presentation that evening. The master plan was approved with stipulations, and one of the stipulations on page two of the decision is actually not numbered, but is in the text after the numbered stipulations. I believe the last one is K, so it would be in the, in a paragraph after K. And it states in pertinent part, "The developer shall apply to the Rhode Island Department of Transportation, RIDOT, to determine if the agency would allow development to be assessed from Coeset Avenue." I wrote a letter requesting that this stipulation be removed. So that, that kind of sets the table as to where, where we are.
Okay.
All right, so.
But you still didn't answer my question.
I'm coming right to it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I didn't want to start in the middle, right?
Okay, all right.
So, the reason that the request, we've asked that the stipulation be removed, is we cannot fulfill the board's stipulation. It's, it's an impossibility on our part. And, and the reason why this is, is that the house that exists on the property right now, 146 Coeset Avenue, this, it's a house on the street front of Coeset Avenue. The land to be developed is behind this house.
Yep.
Okay? And, and Ms. Jun Carr, who the, the namesake of the Jun Carr plat, the name of this project, she lives in this house. And as part of the proposal to purchase and development, this, this development of this land, she is going to stay in the house. She's going to remain in the house. She's a, that's not going to be, the house is going to stay. It's not going to be destroyed or altered in any way. She's going to continue to live there. So, my, my partner, Mr. Bernero, was probably not fully aware of this fact as he appeared before the board, but after we went, after we left, you know, we, we investigated whether we could apply to the Rhode Island Department of Transportation, and pretty immediately figured out that we, you know, we were not going to be able to go through what is shown as lot eight on the subdivision, but is really 146 Coeset Avenue, because Ms. Carr is going to continue to live in the house. So the, the biggest, widest side of the property, from the house to the boundaries, only 29.5 feet. We need 40 plus a 10-foot buffer to the adjoining property, so it would require an actual removal of the home to gain access from Coeset Avenue. So for these reasons, I have drawings from Mr. Bizdara showing the, the distance of the house and where the road would appear if, if the board's interested in seeing those. But really, it's a pretty straightforward situation. Ms. Carr is going to remain in the house. We can't go, we can't go through her house, we can't take down the house, so we can't proceed with the DOT as to the entrance from Coeset Avenue. That's it, that's a very.
That's it, okay. So, at the hearing, when, and, and, and your colleague, Mr. Bernero, was wise to not be here.
In more than one way, but yeah.
And, and, but, the question was raised by Josh and others. We all concurred, why couldn't you access through the property? And the answer that we received from your traffic expert and from Attorney Bernero was that the state would never approve it. So we said, okay, go apply to the state. They disapprove it, you've got your approval. Got everything you need. Okay, so, so the question then is, does the fact that the applicant on behalf, or Jun Carr, the applicant on behalf of the property owner.
Right.
Presented something in, in error that night? And by saying that they could actually go through that lot, and they would seek approval from the state to do it, that's what was presented to us, okay? So, so we, and, and we agonized over approving this because we really feel for the neighbors in the neighborhood that this is going to create a real challenge for them. And we thought this might, if, if approval could be granted, instead of just saying they're not going to be able on it, if it could be granted, then that's how, would solve everybody's problem. So that was, we thought, was a, was a reasonable request, and, and tell Mr. Bernero. We were thrilled that he said, okay. So, so that's where we stand.
Yeah, so, well, and, and we did begin to investigate whether, you know, how that would look.
Yeah.
How, you know, how it would work, and, and I have the, you know, I have the exhibit. I'll show it to you. That's, yeah, absolutely.
Attorney Cronin, I, I have to look back at the statements, but it seemed appears to me that, that Mrs. Carr was not living on the property. Now we're being told that Mrs. Carr is living on the property. So I'm almost positive, I heard Attorney Bernero say that the Suns has taken over and Mrs. Carr is, she's an older elderly woman, and she's not living in her house. So I'm a little, little confused how Mrs. Carr is living in the house now. So that's another misstatement that I think.
Okay, well, I'm going to give these to the solicitor, to, to Mark, and then I'll, I'll come back and.
Okay.
Address that very issue.
I forget, I don't know where we are.
Number, this will be five.
Yeah, number five. What are, what are these?
It shows the distance.
Yeah, it's just the house. Site, site, site plan, okay.
These are the same?
It shows the proposal.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm marking, number five is the site plan, and number six has the proposal.
Okay. We have copies.
Yep.
So, do you want to just make a few statements about, is that all right? You want to get a view? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, Ms. Carr is an elderly woman. I have her nephew here tonight.
Okay.
He's just going to verify for you guys.
Okay.
What he knows, right?
All right, okay.
So state your name for the record.
Sure. Christopher Sheehan, RR 67, Ross Hill Road, Charles Stone, Rhode Island.
Would you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Ms. Carr's been living in that house since she was seven years old, when Coeset Avenue was a gravel road. She's there right now. She's, the only time she wasn't there was about a week and a half when she was in the hospital.
Okay.
She lives there full-time.
Okay.
She has no plans on going anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I, Mr. Barrett, I was not at the meeting, but I gained my understanding from Mr. Sheehan, so that I understand that she's in the home and intends to stay there. I'm not sure, but I just wanted to address that with you. The, the other, the other issue raised by Mr. Barrett was the representation, you know, that, actually, Mr. DiMartino, I think you raised it, Mr. DiMartino, was that, you know, that just wouldn't work, right, was the, was the representation of Mr. Bernero. And so he relied on, on the testimony of Mr. Bannon, the traffic engineer.
Yep.
Mr. Bannon's here. If you would like him to address those comments, rea- to reaffirm or restate his testimony in that regard, like, I'm happy to share that with the board.
We really don't have an, an issue with Mr. Bannon's testimony. He said that the state would not approve it, and we said, well, let's ask the state and see if they approve it.
No.
And we didn't, we passed it based on, if, I have only required you to apply, not to get approval.
Right.
For that interest. And, and that, so, so that was, that was what the testimony was about. That's what our decision was based on, okay? And, and based on the fact that everyone was certain the state wasn't going to approve access from, from this lot, okay?
Right.
So, so that's what, you know, but, we thought, rather than assume that, that they won't approve it, let's, let's let the state give it a shot and tell us whether it's, it's possible. So that's, that's the result.
Sure.
That's what happened, okay?
Yeah, and, and I think.
At that point, we had no idea. We thought it was lot eight of this subdivision, right?
Right, yeah.
Just like it's labeled on the plan, lot eight.
Yeah.
So we, we had no reason to think otherwise.
I agree, and, and that's why that this is a public hearing, you know, fully noticed and advertised. You know, I, I agree that this is, you know, we began our investigation to fulfill the stipulation and found out that we were going to be unable to proceed, provided notice to the plan, that, that we needed to come back before the board and address this. I, I completely understand your position, and I agree that that's the necessity of this public hearing, to, to again, you know, raise this topic and let you know that as we investigate whether we can do this or not, we find an obstacle that we cannot surmount. So, Mr. Bannon, this is like an off, a proffer of testimony in a superior court. Mr. Bannon informs me that he has extensive experience with dealing with the Rhode Island Department of Transportation, and he's prepared to offer testimony that without the willing participation of the owner of 146 Coeset Avenue, that the state will not consider the application. If the board would like to hear that testimony, Mr. Bannon's here to provide it.
Thank you for offering it, but no, I don't, you know, I just, what, what, what that would entail was, do we really know that the owner wouldn't apply? And no testimony has been presented that says the owner would not apply. So, so, you know, we're kind of, it, to me, it, it's, it was a difficult vote, and you guys are making it even more difficult, okay? So, so, and, and, and if, if Ms. Carr were to come here and say she would not apply, that might, that might be enough to sway me. I'm not sure, and I'm not sure about the rest of the people on the board.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I understand what you're saying, and what Ms. Carr is, I'm probably not going to bring Ms. Carr before this board, let's put it that way.
I didn't think you would, but I, I would be happy with a, with a sworn statement
Right.
That you could, right, give her nephew and have him bring it, okay?
So, I, I'm prepared, I would be prepared to ask for a continuance of this hearing.
Yeah.
And prepare an affidavit, and, and give it to the planner well in advance of, of the meeting, so that any, the board can review it, and if they wanted further information, I'd be happy to develop further information in that regard.
Yeah, so my, my feeling is an affidavit from the owner would make sense, and it would get into the fact that the owner needs to apply. That makes, that makes a lot of sense, so.
Okay.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Yeah, I mean, testimony is speculation. I mean, it's, it's just speculating that the DOT might or might not, so I understand the experience.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless I get a letter from DOT stating that they would not request it, I consider that, you know, I apologize, but that's what it is, so.
I don't, personally, I don't feel any, you know, letter from the.
No, no, I'm just telling a statement to come up.
But having an affidavit, having an affidavit from Mrs. Carr that says she would not apply for it, that would do, that would work for me.
Well, I'll, I'll present that evidence.
Okay.
And, and I'd ask for a continuance to the next date certain of, of the meeting of this board, so that we don't have to re-advertise.
Okay.
And I'll provide it well in advance of that, so that it can be, you know, further information needs to be developed.
Okay.
I'll make every effort to develop that information.
All right.
When's the, the next date?
It has to be to date and time certain.
Okay. So, the next meeting?
February 3rd.
Okay, February 3rd, 6:00 PM? Okay, February 3rd, 6:00 PM?
February 3rd, 6:00 PM for purpose of additional presentation?
Yeah, if you have an affidavit from, from Ms. Carr. No, you don't have to bring her here, no. I mean, I understand she's elderly, and, and, you know, we don't necessar- we don't have to burden her, but have her sign an affidavit that's witnessed, and then bring that affidavit to us, and that'll, that'll make the testimony.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd be interested.
Yeah.
If, if the board is so inclined, in what else they might be interested in, in hearing from Ms. Carr about, other than the fact that she lives there and she intends to stay there, and she doesn't want a road through her house.
Yeah.
But, I mean, seriously, if, if there are other things that people would like addressed, I'll, I'll endeavor to investigate and provide that information.
I don't, I don't have anything else that I would request, but I, that's, I don't know if anyone else on the board has other information to deal with.
I thought the statement too was she had a power of attorney, too. Is that, I, I would have to go back to these notes, but there was a lot said about Mrs. Carr's health, her residence, and, and power of attorney, but you just brought a good point off.
Is she going to be able to sign an affidavit if she has a power of attorney?
Honestly, Ms. Ruby, I have not met her. I'll have to assess that when I do meet her. I mean, that's part of my obligation.
Okay.
Is to assess whether she was capable of making a sworn statement.
Mr. Chairman, may I ma- may I make the suggestion? That the motion be made to continue date and time certain for the sole purpose of receiving evidence regarding the ability of Mrs. Carr to.
The applicant to apply for this.
But that's the sole, that's all, the only issue that will be.
Okay, good, I agree. So, so, board members willing to, to.
You have to have a motion.
You'd have to have a motion to, to, just what, what I'll said was, continue date certain, February 3rd, 6:00 PM, for the sole purpose of getting clarity from Mrs. Carr, and which, basically, that will point out the inability to apply.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, before the motion is made, you have a lot of people that I think want to be heard.
Is this a public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Didn't say that, just said that.
Thought you'd need.
So, all right, so, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and, so, for those of you who are here, this is going to be continued until February's meeting to get o- to go through this issue on, on the access to Coeset Road and Ms. Carr's, Coeset Avenue, thank you. And is there, is anyone here, I mean, we've heard from most of you last time, so, you know, but if any of you want to make another comment or statement, you're welcome to come up to the mic. Come on up. You got to come up here and get sworn in, up, up front, get sworn in.
If they own her house already, she's, that's what I want to know.
You got to come up to ask the person. You can ask Jason to ask.
Please, please state your name and address.
My name is Barbara DeFalco, and I live at 15 Carlson Circle.
Would you raise your right hand? So I tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
So I do. And the only question I wanted to know was, do they own her house and her property?
Don't know.
Is that, that was included as the whole eight lots before. I want to know if it's, according to the paper, it says seven.
Right.
Or what happened to that eight?
Good question. Attorney Cronin, did, I, I, property has not been transferred, has it?
Right, there's no, hasn't been a closing, right?
No, hasn't been a closing, yes. That's under agreement to.
I apologize, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, right. Your understanding is correct. Under contract.
Under contract.
Contingent upon.
Contingent upon getting these approvals.
Right, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Lichardi.
Did you name an address?
Excuse me. Jason Lichardi, 26 Carlson Circle.
Yes, yes. I just want to state for the record that I am the town councilman for Ward 4, as I said at the last meeting. I'm not in any way representing the council here tonight, I'm representing my house, my home, 26 Carlson Circle. To piggyback on Mrs. DeFalco, who is here tonight, and I don't want to say her age, but she's a lot older than I am, and she was able to get here with her husband tonight, and they're well into their- Nineties, and they're here tonight, so. Anyway, the, the question I have though, it's just really to clarify, we're talking, again, and I asked this last time, but maybe it's not me, maybe I'm not getting it, on the map it says there's eight, eight lots, right? So, if you look at the map, it says Lot 8 is the existing dwelling.
Right.
So, what property is being sold, is it the seven lots, or is it the eight lots?
Good question, I would assume it's the seven. I would assume it's the seven, but I don't know.
See, that, that's, that's why there's an issue here. Because I know we're going to come back here next month, and you're going to have a letter in hand, and it's going to, I know what it's going to say and all that, and, but these, these things have to be addressed, because it doesn't make any sense. So, where is, if the Lot 8 is the existing dwelling, then where's the eighth new lot? And if the eighth lot is part of this whole thing, then- If the eighth lot is part of this whole thing, then I don't see with any reason why the DOT can't be asked to move this out to Coeset Avenue. And if there's any type of zoning, then that goes to the zoning board, but this, and I'm, I didn't create the map.
Yeah, no.
I'm just, I'm, as, being very simple, asking the questions. And where it says Lot 5 here, between Lot 5 and Lot 8, there's a line, and it says 102.90. Is that a boundary line?
I think it's a dimension line, it's, it's a dimension line, it's 102.9 feet across from one-
All right, so is that the, the divide between Lot 5 and Lot 8 though?
I think it would be, yeah.
So, how does that go right, it looks like it's going right through a garage. So, how do you split a garage? Because if the developer is going to purchase Lot, Lot 5 and not Lot 8, then who owns that garage?
Well, the garage could be torn down, there are things that we don't know, because-
But how can you tear a garage down if there's two different owners?
Right.
It doesn't, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, unless they get permission from the owner to do that.
To tear the garage down?
Garage and before they sell the property.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that, I, that's a developer's question, that would be addressed in the preliminary plan, this is just master plan approval.
So, what hap-
That's a good question.
So, what happens though, if, say, it doesn't matter who buys, developer buys it and goes lots 1 through 5 minus Lot 8? Why is Lot 8 on here if, it's almost like I'm across the street? So, would I be Lot 9? Because it, it doesn't matter, I mean, I don't own it, I have nothing to do with it. All this, all that Mrs. Carr is doing is selling that piece of property.
Right, from the back of her house, apparently, from the back of her house for the development, right.
So, so what happens to Lot 8?
Right, and that's something that-
And what will happen afterwards, after everything is sold and Lot 8 is left, what's, what's the deal? What's, is it a separate thing, it's, who can buy it?
It'd be a subdivided lot that, that Ms. Carr could sell to somebody else or do whatever, she would want that ownership.
But if the developer is going to buy, is the developer going to buy that lot, is that the plan?
According to here, develop eight lots. So, what tells me is that, you know, if we give the, the master plan, he goes, he could build where that access road could be proposed.
Exactly.
I see.
So, there you could put the access road.
Yeah.
Exa, right? So, if everything-
That's the way, I mean, if it's eight lots, I, I'm just looking at what it says, eight lots.
Because that's the way I'm understanding this, so if they're saying that with nothing there, that this can't be done, I don't believe it. And I, and I have another question too, which result, it's, I wasn't going to ask it, because I'm not quite sure if it's on topic, but I really think it is, because it has to do with the access point. If, what we're saying here tonight, or the next meeting, or whatever it is, that you can't go out to Coeset Avenue, the only other place for the entrance is right across from my house. And I've said this at length at the last meeting, so, and I've asked a lot of questions about that, about, in its regards to my son, I'm his advocate, I'm his father, and I wanted to know, I've been racking my brain, and I'm not, I don't have any answers, you know, and some other things have transpired with him since that, which proposes more of an issue if that, if that entrance, or their exit for that new development is coming directly into my house. So, and I don't want to go over those tonight, because that's really not part of the agenda, but, but this access, entrance and exit point is. So, I was wondering if anybody who was in the room with developers were here, you guys were here, I can't think of anything on my end, and I, and I live this.
What's being, what's being sold, I, I, now I'm really confused, we're selling, is, is, is Mrs. Carr keeping the eighth lot? And we're selling seven?
Yeah, and the decision letter, just, you know, Felix, thank you Felix for pointing out, the decision letter points out that the applicant is going to divide the property into seven new house lots with, with a cul-de-sac accessing the property from Carlson Circle and to leave the existing house, 146 Coeset Avenue, on a separate lot with access from Coeset Avenue. So, that was what the applicant applied for, and call, and so.
So, why can't you put a right, why can't you put a right away if she's keeping that, right, right away, right through there?
There could be, I know, these are all questions that-
I got the decision letter, but it says the-
Right, I mean, these are the questions that we were discussing last time, and that's why we put in-
Right.
The stipulation, so, so, I, you know.
And you gave a direction?
Yes.
And the direction wasn't followed, so I don't understand why we're even entertaining all this.
They came here and asked us to remove that stipulation, that's why we're back here, okay? And, and because they've said that they cannot get it, because Ms. Carr would not ask the state to grant that access, because she lives there and plans to continue living the house, that's what we heard tonight.
Okay.
Okay, and, and, and then, and that could, might be all legitimate, that's, could be the real, the true case and what's going to happen, and, and unfortunately, what was presented to us at the public hearing, that this could be a possibility if the state approved it, is no longer valid, and, and, well, we'll, we'll know that after the continued hearing next week.
But why, it's been four months though, it's been four months.
Yeah.
You know, since, since the last meeting, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, that simple question should have been, and I'm thinking that night, as all the tempers were kind of high and all that, that would have, should have been asked the next day, so.
And this was master plan approval. Subsequent to this, details would go into what would be called a preliminary plan. And so, you're going to, there's another hearing, when you come back with all of the specifics on what's going to happen, that, the storm drainage, you know, the utilities-
I already have my list of questions, so.
I'm certainly going to be here with that.
Because we're all going to be affected by this, myself and my neighbors.
Yeah.
My biggest one is my son, to be honest with you.
I understand, I understand.
So, I don't know if I have to go the, the whole route, medical route, and disability route, and that kind of stuff, if, you know.
You got to do what you got to do, I understand, okay, and we have to, we have to do.
I understand it, I just want to make sure that one, one, one group is not more important than another. You know, because right now, I'm feeling like, you know, after I left the last meeting, that, you know, my son, who has a disability, which he can't, Johnson's driven autism, he can't change that. So, why is he less important, you know, than, than somebody else, and that's not the case, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
State your name and address, please.
Chris Tyler, 31 Carlson Circle.
I do. I just want to stop by saying that I agree with everything you said, you did a great job. And I appreciate all you guys for saying what you already said, it does show your care. My problem is that, that Lot 8, because now that's changed. We all got a plan with eight lots on it, which we all just went through all that. Now, all of a sudden, one disappears, no reason. That was put on there because they planned on buying that house, that was part, that's what a plan is for. I'm a builder too, I know what the plan is. Now, all of a sudden, it's gone. She's staying in the house or whatever, I don't care about that, it's on the plan. Eight, not seven. Now, it's gone for a reason nobody seems to know, and I know the reason, and I think a lot of you do too. If they buy that house, they can put the access road there, but it's going to cost more money. And honestly, who wants to spend more money? Nobody, let's be honest about it, that's what this is about, money. Not saving the neighborhood, not caring how bad the traffic is in that neighborhood, it's about money, that's what it's about. And for that, I mean, I agree with everything you said, but that Lot 8 is a problem, and it's shady.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to Lot 8, Lot 8 is a residual lot that would be remaining when, when all of the land was subdivided, so, so Lot 8 hasn't disappeared, it still exists, it's part of the, it is part of the subdivision, but it's, it's a lot that will have, does have, and will have a house on it. So, it has to be on the plan, because it's, it's, technically, there will be a new lot there, it might have the same lot number, but.
But let me ask something, Mark, if, if we, this goes through, and then, all of a sudden, Mrs. Carr doesn't live there anymore, and the house gets demoed, destroyed, they, they would have to come back before us to make that lot into a condo, or do they have free reigns to, to do whatever they want, long as it stays residential, Mrs. Carr's house?
They would have free reign to do whatever they want that, for, for anything that would conform to zoning. So, if it went to, if, if it went to multifamily, they'd have to come back?
Yeah.
But if it, if it was a single family rehabbed it, no, if they raised it and built a new one, no. And potentially, I'm not sure of the, the requirements for multi, a two-family there, but in certain areas of the town, two-family houses are allowed by right, so, I, I don't think it is here, but potentially two-family.
I just noticed that the property line between Lots 5 and Lot 8 is different from what they gave us.
On that plan there, yeah, so, that, that may be something that, I, I don't know the answer to that, but it may be something that they're reconsidering coming back, I, I don't know why that, you're right, it is different.
So, the property line now between Lot 5 and Lot 8 has been changed on this newest plan that you handed out.
Yeah, I gave this, this was all my top.
Okay, so, on the, on the big plan, the property line goes from here, it goes through the garage to here. So, now it's here, so that's a change in the property line since-
I'll have to address that.
Okay.
As far as I know, the plan, the big plan, the submission, that controls. This was informative as to the space between the house and the property.
So, all right, yeah, so, so that, okay, that will remain, which, which is problematic, because it goes, does go through the garage on that plan, and not on this one, okay?
And to directly address Lot 8, as Mr. Krulow alluded to, so, the lot where the house is on, there was two big lots behind this house.
Yeah.
And the house, that the, the lot that the house is on is cut up, we have changed the property lines of that lot. And that is why Lot 8 appears on the subdivision plan, because it has new property lines, okay? So, that's still Ms. Carr's lot, but as part of this subdivision, it has to be shown, because the lot line has changed, which we've reduced the amount of property associated with that home.
Okay.
That's-
Okay, so that's the, that's, so it is part of the subdivision in that regard?
In that way, yes.
Okay, okay, so, so, Tom, if you take a look at the original plan, because I know you weren't here, but can we show Attorney Cronin that, that lot line?
This is one big lot, yeah, I'll show him a sec, this one big lot.
Yeah, that's a, yeah, but this, this is the application, that's the record.
That's the one, that's the record, that's, yeah, okay.
I asked the surveyor for a, a distance, because, right, I knew you guys were going to ask me how far it was, right? You guys, you know, because you're smart, you'd say, how far is it really, so I had to find out.
Plan, good, okay, thank you. All right, it's, anyone, go ahead.
Could you take a two-minute recess for myself and?
Okay, we're going to take a two-minute recess, don't go, now the recess is over. Okay, all right. Okay, so, so, does that, does your conversation require additional, no, okay. So, all right, is there anyone, any further comment from the neighbors or from concerned citizens? Yeah, come on up. Okay, all right.
Yes, James Ainsco, 3 Carlson Circle, I just had a question that's floating around, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're a geranium, first, you got to get sworn in first.
I do. Is, is, are they going to develop condos or mostly?
No, no, it's house lots, it's house lots, yeah.
Okay, I just want to be sure on that fact, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Sure, Catherine Oak, 78 Dawes Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island.
Do I tell the truth, tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, this is my first meeting involving this whole situation, I was never notified about another one, but that's near the end or there. My concern, and you were talking about money, and the bottom line being money, there's no sidewalks in that neighborhood. Okay, there's a lot of children in that neighborhood, and there's a lot of elderly in that neighborhood. My concern is that if someone is to get hit, God forbid, if you put the entrance coming in from Carlson Circle, and you've been advised that this could happen, where's that money going to come from if you're named in a lawsuit, first and foremost? Okay, that's something to think about also. It's a very congested area, I don't know if anybody's been up there. There's been a lot of houses that have been redone, neighbors are very concerned about their property. You're going to have an increase in traffic, as you're aware of. First responders, there's hills coming up Ray Street, Lee Street, so you're going to have all these things to deal with. The winter, I don't know about the conditions of the road, obviously, this winter hasn't been bad. But you're going to have, you know, first responders, you're going to have your highway department, and everybody's going to be taxed a little bit more. So, I obviously would like them to come in from Coeset Avenue, because I have children that live in that area also. I understand that the woman that lives in the house is elderly and not doing very well, unfortunately, that happens. I would suggest that maybe you just wait, and then take the house down, and make everybody happy, yourselves included, thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, and actually, just, just, just a reminder, and if there's anyone else that wants to talk, that you can really, you really should limit your comments to what's on the agenda for tonight. And that's just this access of Coeset Avenue, so, so appreciate that, and I appreciate there's concerns, and some of you couldn't make the last meeting, but those concerns were all raised, and, and it made it difficult for us, because we, we believe that by law, the property owner is entitled to be able to subdivide this into house lots, so, so, we would be doing, we would be flouting the law if we denied it. But what, so, anyway, anyone else that wants to talk about the access on Coeset Avenue? Okay, if not, I'll have a motion that we close the public hearing, you got a question? Go ahead. Close, this is part of the public hearing?
Just closing the public hearing, I move that motion.
No, not yet, not yet.
It may seem, sound insensitive, but where is Ms. Carr's health, you know, and you say she's elderly? Sixties, seventies, nineties?
She's 92, and she's stubborn as a mule, tough as nails, as I'm sure the DeFalcos would admit. You're shaking your head no. I don't think, what do you mean, she's not doing too good, I mean, I'm not a doctor.
But that's, that's not, that's immaterial, thank you, yeah, that's immaterial.
If you wanted me to bring her here tonight, we could have done that.
Yeah, but that's okay, we didn't realize what was, we didn't know why this-
No, I'm, I, I guess I'm, it's upsetting to me to hear that, that things are being said about her health, and it's really personally none of their business. And I think people should know too, that we did first come to the town to purchase the property, and that the town wasn't in a financial position to purchase it. And to go through the process of doing so, would need a public vote, and the whole nine yards, so.
That was to keep the, so, the, the field?
Yes.
Continue to town, yeah.
The last thing I want to say is that I understand why people are objecting to it, but her father, Harold Carr, owned all the real estate that most of these houses are built on, so.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you. Okay, so, so I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move that motion.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing, you say aye?
Aye.
Okay, now, any, discuss, further discuss, so, I, I would now entertain a motion that we continue- Okay, now, any, further discuss, so, I would now entertain a motion that we continue this to a date certain, February 3rd, 6 o'clock, to have, to have an affidavit from Ms. Carr.
To be limited.
To be limited to the discussion around the affidavit from Mrs. Carr, okay, is there a motion for that?
Then make that motion.
I move that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Actually, two guys moved the motion, okay, anyway, all right, so we got, any further discussion on that?
Nope.
So all in favor of continuing the hearing until February 3rd, say aye?
Aye. Someone's abstaining, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm...
Oh, you're abstaining, right.
And I'm also abstaining, Joe Garcia, I wasn't part of that, right?
Both of you guys weren't part of it, but, just, you're in, okay, all right, so the meeting is continued, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda tonight, administrative subdivision approval, okay, all right, you have an administrative subdivision approval, Mark?
None.
None?
None.
Another item for public comment, anyone else interested in talking about whatever? Okay, no, so, all right.